Good evening. I am making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act in Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2018, and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed two copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Will you all please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Secretary of Volk Office?
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Parr?
Here.
Mr. Babbi?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Rudali?
Here.
Mr. Flala?
Here.
Mr. Mattio?
Here.
Mr. Joe?
Here.
And Mr. Penney?
Here. Okay, thank you. Can we, can someone make like the mic abortion for the approval of the September 18, 2018 minutes, please?
I'll make it.
Okay, sir. All the whole of them?
My God.
Kathy, do we have any?
No.
No communications. Alright, so, um...
No resolutions.
No resolutions at the moment, that's fine. Alright, so we're gonna move on to, uh, to new business. Uh, and the first application is gonna be Application 18-01, at the Marne subdivision for Grunwald Properties LLC. Uh, can you, yeah. Kathy, are we okay with notice and communication? Okay, thank you.
No, this is a minor, so there's no...
Oh, oh, I didn't know if there, okay. That's right, there's no variance.
Yeah, the two categories are mine.
Right. The variance pops up here.
Is it probably set in the corner here or in the middle?
In the middle.
You're way from our secretary, great.
Yes.
Gentlemen, with regard to this application, do you swear that any comments you may make shall be the truth?
I do.
And that was Kevin O'Brien, our planner, and...
I'm Mr. Quine.
Right, from Victor Benegra's office, our engineer.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, which one of the attorney, you have Grunwald Properties. I'd like to call Mr. Quinn to testify right ahead of all prior statements.
Counsel, can we, can you do this for me first? Just, I have your name. If you could just indicate in ten words or less why you're here, and how many witnesses, if there's gonna be more than one witness, how many? Or if this is your only witness, just so we know who to ask questions of.
Very good. Uh, Jeff, which one of the, Grunwald Properties, the managing member of Grunwald Properties, Mr. Nencheck will testify, and Mr. Quinn will testify.
Okay. Sir, could you raise your right hand? With regard to this applications, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you just state your name and spell your last name?
Sure, it's Thomas Quinn, Q I N N. Business address, 28 Park Avenue, Spatula.
Very good.
Mr. Quinn, would you just provide us with the testimony as to your background and your shape and then prior testimony?
Sure, 1993 graduate, then J I T. Received my professional engineers license in New Jersey in 1997. Since then, I have served as board engineer for about eight or 10 boards, mostly in Hardest County. Um, I have, since that time, submitted applications and presented testimony before dozens and dozens of boards, mostly in Union County. And don't worry, we might have any...
I've, uh, I've worked with Mr. Quinn, both appearing before me and also on private applications, and provided his license to still occur, and I would recommend it to the board.
It is perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, without further ado, um, we're talking about minor subdivisions. As I heard, you already said it's an equally conforming minor subdivision. And it involves, for the record, property notice tax lot 32, lot 114, highlighted in the center of the page here. It's essentially an oversized lot, almost 11,000 square feet of lot. You think you're R5 zone, which requires 5,000 square feet. The only other feature to note on here is that you've got access provided on South 20th. And the property is surrounded by residential houses on all sides. Quickly, flip to the existing conditions plan, it'll give you, uh...
These are the plans that we have on the...
That's correct, thank you for clarifying.
We don't need to mark those.
That's right, these are all plans that were submitted to the board. I'm referring now to the total coverage survey, it's at the very end of sheet 3.
And if there's...
Yes, sir. Yes.
Members of the public here, if you folks wanna come up to the front and take a look, we're welcome with the chairs.
Please, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah. Is this South 20th Street?
Yeah, 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 this is the one, that's right.
So, we're looking at the left, it currently exists, again, at the 19th and 12th for the lot. And we have it, I have it from the top of the sheet. It consists of a single frame of home, separate basement, garage, and quite a big impervious service associated with this. As a matter of fact, the current impervious service is on the existing lot, is less than what we're proposing following the minor subdivision. Um, the only other thing I would mention that's important is we have a 15-foot wide easement currently located on this property that currently houses or is occupied by a sanitary sewer as well as a stormwater side. In terms of drainage, essentially this lot is split right in the middle of the house with the back half of the house and all of the rear yard flowing towards the west. And the front half of the house and portion of the driveway flowing to the east out to the south. So, question.
Excuse me, Mr. Quinn. Uh, with regards to the coverage currently on the property as opposed to whether it may have been subdivided, I'm not sure if it's very clear to me, something goes here as to what coverage currently is greater or less. You don't make a lot of eye contact.
In the existing condition, we've got an impervious stuff of 5,160 square feet. In the proposed condition, we're proposing 5,020 square feet. So, a reduction of 140 square feet of impervious cover relative to the way the property stands now.
That's after the subdivision.
Correct. Yes, and reducing by 140.
I understand where you're going, okay.
Um, quickly, we include the two Ls, previous subdivision, and also the coverage in the lots.
Well, there's two, let's keep going.
So, I'm now on sheet three. Sheet three is rating plan. It shows the creation of the two lots. Um, you've got the lot, the northerly lot, contains 5,980 square feet. The southerly lot, 5,000 square feet. The reason that we proportioned more property to the northerly lot is in fact due to the 15-foot wide easement that is entirely on our property. Mr. O'Brien brought a question in his review letter. The cover sheet shows ease and split between our property and the adjacent properties in north. When we did our deed research, title search, it turns out that X matters in here. We own the entire easement there. And that explains why we proportioned more property to the northerly lot.
Okay.
Uh, again, we're showing two conforming dwellings, two access drives on South Street. As I indicated, the proposed conditions result in less impervious cover than we have currently now.
Right.
All utilities, we have access obviously off South Street. We've got a very sewer, we've also got a storm drain out here. We've got water and gas that will be utilized by the... Again, this is a performative subdivision, so it's not a lot for me to talk about other than to respond to your professionals' letter. So, unless you have questions about a layup or any of that, I'm happy to go through and address the items to your professionals later.
Absolutely. Does anyone have questions right now, engineer?
Yeah, I would, actually. I understand the offset of the lot because of the easement.
Yes.
And reading the schedule, the requirements, um, it said there was no variances for this.
That's correct.
But the rear width of the property is not 50 feet. Does it have to be?
No, my understanding is the lot is measured at the front yard. I don't know if that's the case, but that was my understanding.
Doesn't have to, okay. Cause then the, the area is still, it meets the covers, but, okay.
You get it both ways, the width in the front and the square footage of the entire lot.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I do start with Kevin's letter, Becker's letter. Uh, there's always some things I can talk about here, I can't talk about the building. We'll let the public go to use your talk more about the building and how it's gonna distinguish one from another. Cause that would point us at...
Is this your September 8th letter?
Yes, sir, thank you. September 8th, 2018 letter. Again, and Kevin will reiterate any where he feels maybe I missed something or he wants to discuss something, but I'm gonna drop down to page six. Um, you talk a little bit about cover sheet, how the cover sheet apparently, which is based on tax tax shows, you can split one property. So, here, confirm, first Kevin's request, that are these is entirely on our property and that's based on a kind of sort of similar... Um, I've also, I think I've addressed the issue of why this lot is different. Another question Kevin had is the presence of...
Sure.
Um, there was a good question raised about the sliding doors out back. There's no impervious cover showing out back. As a matter of fact, I spoke to the owner about this. He said, well, we have enough impervious coverage, we have 140 square feet, I think. So, we could put two 8x8 patios out back, which would be ample size for patio, and still be below the impervious coverage limitations of the property as well as preclude the need for drainage because we're not increasing impervious surface.
Is that reflected on that map?
No, there's no patio reflected on that map, so... While we have, you'll see our lot coverages are well below what's allowed. I was actually surprised to see that we submit 75% lot coverage on your lots. We're nowhere near that. We're at 50 for the smaller lot and 42 for the larger ones. So, we have room, per ordinance, to provide additional impervious coverage. And again, if you stay within the 8x8, we are neutral in terms of storm management, which will not increase impervious cover relative to these existing conditions.
No, that wouldn't raise any variance issues in terms of setbacks?
No, sir.
Next, you can...
I mean, those are the things, Kevin has asked the applicant, right, testified that that people have no negative effect on the site or surrounding areas. That's my line, is the negative criteria associated with the planning variance. I can have no variances here, so I'm not sure I am done person. The only thing I can talk about is that, even though we got no variances, the issue I'm sure these people are here for and most people are concerned about is drainage. And as I indicated, we're reducing impervious coverage, so the drainage impact will be less. But I'm gonna talk a little bit when I get to the, uh, the letter from your engineer, a little bit about the actual drainage pattern and how we're going to address one or two of the comments.
Sure.
So, if Mr. O'Brien is satisfied with my synopsis of his letter, then we move on.
There were two items to be addressed, if I may.
Sure.
The bottom of page five concerning street trees.
Oh, yes, thank you. We have, we show a total of two newly planted trees. There's an enormous twin tree in the corner of this. I think your building actually requires three trees for every 30 feet of lot frontage. That would equate to three along our property. So, with this one being where it is, and a very healthy tree, we supplemented that with two, so we've met the 10 of yours. What we didn't realize is we placed these on the property line. Mr. O'Brien is asking me to slide in the back, so the tree is entirely on the applicant's property. Don't have any problem doing that. The only issue we've got with regard to the northern trees, there was some concern that this tree is planted within the easement. I cannot really relocate that tree to be, the easement runs immediately off the house, so I would have to, acceptable to you, I'd have to put this tree literally right on the driveway curb line. And I'm always reticent to do that because as the tree grows, it's gonna create havoc with that curb line. So, I would almost have to eliminate this tree to move it, uh, unless there's some sort of contribution scheme that you have when an avenue cannot comply with the tree. This tree is problematic, again, because it is literally 3 feet from the driveway, and so it's gonna be up the stretch, we squeeze that in and you know that. But I do understand that, generally, you don't like these trees into easement. In this case, so we tried to tie it with the 10 orders, but I don't know where else that tree's gonna belong.
Well, why don't you flip the driveway? You put the, on the northerly lot, put the driveway on the right side.
I mean, that's...
And then you could shave, shift the tree over.
If that is up to the applicant, we generally don't, like, most developers don't like to have driveways that close to one of them. Garage, garage next to it, that's generally not a desirable.
Well, just to satisfy the other points that you're trying to get at.
Yeah, yeah, if a, if a contribution is not acceptable to you and you insist on having a tree, which is obviously correct, then I have to, if the applicant is willing to flip the house, I don't know why there would be any other reason except that the two driveways next to each other is kinda close. But I'll let him opine on that, um, when he comes up and testify about that. Otherwise, that doesn't happen. I'm back in a situation where I don't know where that tree's gonna go. And again, I don't know if it's difficult for you to request contributions from people where planning a tree is not practical or even doable, but I'll leave that to you and your professionals.
Chairman, that's a design by a good board, certainly allowed him not to plant that tree since it's... Mr. Quinn, it's my sort of...
Right, I'd like to see some, some of those requirements being met somehow, some, um, some...
Can you plant elsewhere?
That's what I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking, a little out of the box, if we think something. I know that tree at the end is giant.
It's very big, too.
Yeah, so, but we don't wanna, you know, uh, can't we move, is there...
I'm on the second line here. These lots are small, so I can't reposition the house in any way. And I've already taken as much of this lot frontage as I can, so I don't have a lot of liberty to move things further away from the easement that's entirely on our property. And that's why this tree practically is pretty good, it's problematic. Okay, I can use a better plan in here, but I just, I don't wanna create a headache for the future owners of the property, which may lead to any variance in curving, it's likely to do.
Yeah, Mr. Pantina brought up a good point, about if you're not gonna use that easement, cause that was gonna be my next question, if you're not gonna use that easement area, you must make it a driveway, I guess.
No, no, I, no, my, my, no, 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 my, my, my comment was to flip the house so that the driveway, rather than being close to the easement, is where the stairs are now. So, then you could push the tree over to where the driveway is. You know what I mean, like, just have to flip the house, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then it's not... But then you're... Any other driveway.
You got two garages that you're looking at and you don't have any one. It doesn't, it doesn't look great from a structural...
That's what I'm saying, generally, most builders are loath to do that for that reason. It makes the house a little difficult. Sell, people, it's just, it's not a, okay, desirable.
So, do you have anything in place as far as sending it somewhere else in town?
We don't, but if the board decides that this is just not gonna work, um, because the driveway's enough too close or the trees and the easement, or it's gonna bust out to the driveway in a couple of years, um, maybe out of the goodness of their heart, the applicant could donate a tree to Town Borough.
Alright, we'll take a tree.
I just have a question about the easement, cause I, I was there at swing block today, I just happened to down there today. And, um, basically, the end of that driveway is where the drain is, right? And literally, uh, literally right there, and on the other side of the scene, I think. And what I, uh, I assume it's all, would all stay grass there, uh... The evening? Yeah, that is, but I mean, in the future, future owners can come up to your pavement and say, yeah, I need extra parking.
Oh, there are only restrictions, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I know, I know. Right, but I'm just, just wanna make sure we think about that now. What I found was, when it went, it goes down from the top of the street, builds up, goes all the way down to that drain. But then, I guess those two houses across the street and what, these two were maybe built, I don't know, whatever, they... It, it goes higher, so what happens, that one from there goes the other way, goes back into that drain. It doesn't go into Cranford, it doesn't go into the...
No, that's correct.
Yeah.
Well, it sees a little higher, so the water...
So, I'm trying to say, yeah, that's what, that's, in terms of drains, that's what I'm concerned. And I'm also concerned, you're saying that the backyard goes into the other backyard.
Right, we're gonna, I'll get into that more than...
Alright. Yeah, we'll, we'll come through, then we'll figure it out.
Okay, alright. So, Kevin, Mr. O'Brien is satisfied that I addressed some of these comments.
One more, Mr. Quinn, handbook, page six. Page back, um...
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, okay, I'll answer that. These are going to be engineered ones, probably opposite ends, so they all impact. This one will be here, this is even, and this one will probably be over here. But the two opposite ends, and I understand that your requirements require these to split now. So, those are the locations, we'll certainly show those on your vice plans submitted to the board as an additional approval if we're so lucky to get them.
And the coverage will count?
Yes, yes, it will count, that covers, absolutely.
So, I had, Chairman, thank you.
Awesome, well, with that, then I'm gonna move to our next story. And again, items I don't specifically address, we obviously look at, I won't consider the items up there. Is that for testimony or whatever, I think there's something we need to discuss. So, I'm gonna drop down to his item number three, H2, curving. The applicant has requested that I request a waiver from that, based on the problem. There is a session, there's no real curb on the entire street. Only curbing that exists is railroad high curve. So, if we seem somber, cumbersome to this owner and maybe someone had a place on the development on the entire street to provide curving on the side frontage when there is no real curving, no hard curving anywhere down the street, making that a little more difficult is the fact that we've basically got no defined street here, at the end of the street. We will be defining what the driveways and the lawns, but we could not, that curb could not, for example, be carried and pass this lot frontage because of the tree here. This tree is very large and it was a clue to some coming, you know, maybe to the driveway with the curb. We couldn't go past this driveway, which means we've been talking about, who lives here and who doesn't live here. Again, I don't know why that's warranted, uh, certainly it's zero ordinance and it's a desire that I'll follow, but just seeing driving down the road, what I saw did not seem to merit placing with curving. A million pieces of curving, basically two pieces of curving is in front of this property. Transition curve up, full height for the line, transition down, it just seemed very cumbersome and will leak, um, this property, so he is requesting a waiver for that.
Okay. Uh, Chris, Kevin, what do you think?
Um, I, I agree that there is no curving along that road. And, uh, however, if the borough ever goes and redoes that road and puts in curving, it's gonna just be assessed to the ever, the future owner. So, I have no issues with, uh, granting a waiver for that.
Is that a waiver or is that a thing? That's a design by a good designer.
Yeah, it's, it's the minimus, in my view, and it's, uh, different than a, a hard, variance is a harder, harder decision. But that's fine.
I'm gonna jump into item four, actually, we addressed that as part of Kevin's letter I was gonna suggest.
I think I can.
I'm addressing this now, but this has to do with the whole area condition, uh, we have to discuss where they're... Um, I drop down to item six, where he's asking whether it's the, asking it's gonna be subdivided by a plaque or by D. Minor subdivision is going to be by D, in the lot, comparing the platter. Rating and drainage, this file is the... So, let me show you what goes on in the existing condition. Again, we're not fighting against new pound because we're not impressed in our curving coverage, but we will be making efforts to direct water away from adjacent lots here we have. But let's review the existing condition. In the existing condition, we've got half of the lot, including half of the house with the gutters swatched at grade, traversing to the east and to the north. That's an existing condition. Why? Why?
Yeah.
Why the condition?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, no, that's right. In the proposed condition, the houses are pushed further back. This house, the existing house, I don't know if you can see it, but that, that house sits forward of the current house, which means there's a lot more backyard and a lot more dwelling potentially that impact the rear yard. The trick to this is tinning the roof leaders from the proposed dwellings and directing them towards the front. If I am able to do that, I will greatly reduce the area of water that's running towards the adjacent neighbors' property. Vastly, because the existing house has no detention, the water's running onto the ground and to the back, so I don't know if it's evident to you, hopefully it's evident to your, your engineer, but... The dwellings represent the largest proposed shed of water here. This, for this dwelling, it's an easy matter to collect the roof leaders and take it directly into the pipe like in the easement adjacent. This lot is a little trickier because we don't wanna create easement to run the pipe through the J C R into this. So, what I'm suggesting could happen, we've got these lots basically rated so that it's a great in the middle. I, we can either take the roof leaders, I don't know if you have any, but I can either take the roof leaders to the street, run them in the right of way and tie them to the inlet. Some towns are loathe to have individual property or its drainage in the right of way. Alternatively, we could make this house, again, the gutters would run along this side, center, uh, center, actually. Water sheds left and right of this, those level. So, if the applicant developer is able to lift this back gutter and create a low spot in here, we can discharge those at grade and they will go directly to the street. Those are the two scenarios, really, the only scenarios I can offer here. There's no way to collect these rear yards and, you know, get them into the sewer. And frankly, it's not really, I don't think it's required because if we collected the dwellings, we would, we would have to reduce the area of runoff dramatically that the adjacent neighbors are seeing now, so...
Okay, just hang on a second. Does anyone have any questions at this point about that? Do you think that would be a good solution?
I mean, in the existing condition, from what I know, this, this site kind of, he's right. It drains toward, the, the front half drains towards South 20th and the middle to the back part of the property drains towards, uh, I guess, towards South 19th, the adjacent street. Um, I would recommend trying to put those roof leaders and connect it to the existing storm sewer that is, uh, along, uh, South 20th. And that would probably help alleviate, um, a lot of drainage that's, that's there now.
Tell me this, do you know that you have any compunctions about us running a roof leader in the right of way and tying that in, or would you prefer us not do that and just bring the roof leaders, the, the discharge to the middle of the house and...
I would rather...
Not be collected?
I'd rather connect it to, into the, into the inlet.
Okay, okay, that could be done. So, essentially, we're gonna plant both dwellings, take the... So essentially, we're gonna plan both dwellings, take their runoff away from impacting any adjacent neighbors, and take it directly to the.
So that, that ends up in, in the right of way, you're gonna come out and somehow run it through the right of way, so there's no need for an additional easement?
No, no, there's no need for easement, um, but it would be, uh.
Or, or, or would it be better to, to extend, extend inlet to the property line, would that make more sense?
Take this?
Yeah.
Right?
I mean.
Most of the trees. Where would you put it?
I would assume that they're gonna need droppings. They're gonna need.
Well.
Ken, Ken, worse.
Permission to go into a right of way.
That'd be part of the driveways.
I mean, I just can't see a scenario, it's a right angle, where you're gonna run that, say you do a six inch PVC and, and run it uh, a hundred feet, let's say.
Well, no, essentially, what I will do, I worked at the grade, this is near as long a road as we can get. They can fix these gutters so that, you know, this could be the first downspout, I can run that downspout around this way, into the right of way, run it along the right of way, and then, I have sufficient comfort to do that. That is done in some towns, but other towns frown upon anything other than city or township. So infrastructure in the third, in the right of way, that's why I said, but I've thought both ways. It is, it is, it would be very useful to run a six inch.
Yeah, probably six inch.
Along the right of way, and then tie it in.
Yeah, I just, I might need to agree at that point, without some type of connection, especially for maintenance down the road, where you at least have a small inlet.
He can put in an inlet.
He can put in like clean outs at every turn, so that there's.
Yeah, clean out or something like that. There are sweeps too, I mean, they make, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, I thought you meant in the right of way, you put in sweeps.
Sweep to get into, then we could do, it's not a sewer, you're very uh, keen of, you know, hydraulic, make hydraulic efficient movement, so this would not be a hard idea, it's gonna be a little. Add, add as your engineer is really pointed out, we can put a clean out right there, so that if whatever happens, you know, if God forbid that gets clogged, you know, they can come at it from the inlet, or they can come at it from the, the other side.
Um, question, I, you know what, we'll get the same thing you have there, so we can finish it really ahead. That backyard, when you get done, how's it gonna be sloped?
Which one?
The both, the other one, is it gonna be sloped back towards the other houses, down, or is it?
Yes, no, no, backyard is gonna be the same drainage pattern as that, backyard will be sloped down, I can't.
Will that, will that cause problems for them?
Uh, well, no, again, my testimony is that I can't eliminate all of the yard area from impacting them, because.
Sure, mine, yeah.
But I'm reducing tremendously the amount of area, and a purpose cover that's going off there, so there will be some runoff. My testimony is it will be dramatically reduced relative to what they're seeing now.
Alright.
So, to put it in layman's terms, you're moving the houses back in the property, so there's not as much backyard where water could collect. All the water that goes on the roof of the house are gonna be collected into downspouts, straight out to the front of the house, and straight into the um,
Easement.
Uh, to the sewer.
Easement.
Storm sewer. And it's, it's not gonna run in the street, it's gonna be into a pipe right in the storm sewer, and straight out.
That's correct. So the only thing hitting the street is gonna be, what, what hits the, uh, rest of the driveway?
That's right. I mean, in the front, yeah, wherever a little front goes, yeah, mostly the driveway.
And the way the driveways are, and the slough grades are now, everything will drain towards New York, uh, South Twentieth, and then go towards the inlet there now.
Okay, that's what we need, yeah.
Could I ask a, just a clarity question, um, because we're talking about flooding, and streets definitely floods, but does the northwest corner of this property currently, like right by the garage flood now? Does anybody know?
You want to see here?
Yeah, well, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we have, and I'm sure the public will let us know in a little while, but um, if we have a fifteen foot uh, storm eas- uh, easement here, and we have a uh, storm pipe running in there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would the uh, would you guys be opposed to putting inlet in that northeast corner of the property, in the east?
Northeast?
No.
Sorry, sorry, northwest.
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 I know we could do that, but I don't know what it's talking games, rating such where I can't force the water that way, and make it exist.
Going in the opposite direction?
Uh, yeah, going the opposite direction, so that's why I think the most pragmatic solution.
No, I understand of tying everything in, controlling it all underground and coming into the pipe. But making sure if I can create to that inlet corner, I think it'd be a fine idea, but it's, it's not gonna get us. But, I didn't, unfortunately, didn't go there in the last good rain, and I didn't go there this afternoon. Um, but, when I went there, about twelve hours after the last big rain, that, this side of the property, and I didn't go on the property, because the property also doesn't exactly look maintained at the moment, so I didn't wanna venture off to anything. Um, but there was considerable amount of water there. So, if that's an area that you guys just brought up a number of times about reducing the back of the uh, the uncontrolled water in the backyards, so there must be an issue with the water in the backyards besides my viewing of some water back there. You have a sanitary pipe, you have a, a sanitary easement.
Well, sewer, that's all.
Uh, I'm sorry, not, yeah, I'm sorry, storm uh, easement. It could be preventative.
Yeah, if there is a problem now, I agree with you, I just don't know that there's a problem, I've not seen water sitting there, but I don't think anybody objects to placing an easement. Because if there is water sitting there, it's gonna benefit the.
It's gonna benefit the property.
So.
I mean, and it's.
We're at first.
It's not that odd, um, not on my property, but uh, the property, uh, property near across from me, there's a same type of easement that goes through. As people have an inlet in their backyard, they love it, because they never get flooded.
As long as the existing, that assumption.
I'm sure it's all.
Yeah, it goes the tunnels that way anyways. I mean, if he's suggesting, uh, like lawn inlets along the rear, I mean.
Well, I didn't think he was suggesting, I don't even just suggesting that there was water sitting, looks like, if I looked at this topo, there's any flat spot, it looks to be right on the easement, I can't tell because we don't have a lot of offsite topo. But this part of the contour, it looks like water is freely flowing off the property from the easement to the south, but I just can't, I have not been out there, it was too dark for me to see, so anyway, I don't know. So, I, I would have no problem putting in, in inlet in the easement. What I will tell you though, about having, you've only got a twenty-five foot rear yard, so dropping inlets in the backyard, should be most homeowners probably like to do it, they don't like to see it, it covers the property, and easements get clogged, we have an issue, so.
Okay, not on their property, but on, in, within the easement.
Yes, no, I'm absolutely, if your engineer seems to suggest that, we can drop it into the backyard.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just suggesting.
No, no, I, I have no issue with that suggestion, obviously, obviously, we have.
And what, so what are you talking, what are we talking about now, an inlet?
An inlet.
Northwest corner?
Northwest corner of the site, um, within the easement.
Excellent, okay.
It's always a trap, the local.
That's the point.
Uh, what I'm saying is that, I don't understand, but there's somebody, people here are telling me water sits there. If that's the case, then popping an inlet there is gonna take care of that localized water that sits there, it's not gonna capture any other water, except for what is most likely to be anywhere in the world.
It's not, it's not a whole lot of area that's going into.
I know, that's why.
I mean, you have a, you have a high point, three quarters of the way up from along that easement.
Right.
That, three quarters of it now goes towards that inlet that's along South Twentieth.
I'll tell you, we've cut out a bad, just what you're trying to say.
Christian.
Christian, we've matched, just so you know, the high, we've matched this high, this is, you see the way the grade up? It looks like this is about the high spot, this water will traverse this way, this water will. We've made a high spot with this high spot, we've located this high spot from near the ridge on that contour, so we maintain it in drainage pattern. Uh, again, I might, professional opinion is that it's not gonna grab a lot of water, just as it's a thing, but if there is a localized problem, water sits right here, and it looks not going to hurt, I just don't know how much real benefit it's going to be lost.
Once, currently there is a garage and a driveway back there.
Yes, sir.
When those items are removed, well, like the coverage removed, and this will reverse to grass, how will that affect the drainage at that point compared to the current?
There's a much less water that even has the opportunity to pond there, if in fact it does clog, so. I give that's good point, I mean, what you're hearing, the professional saying, is that really gonna help? And isn't it just, without an inlet, isn't the current layout going to reduce water that even hits that area, so? Again, I, I don't wanna be argumentative. I'm happy to put an inlet there, if it's, you know, if it's gonna relieve your worries, but if we're all just don't know how much.
I, I, I tend to think that, I understand it's not gonna solve all the problem, but I think a combination between the roof leaders going outside in that spot, I think it's gonna drastically reduce the runoff that's hitting the other neighbors, so yeah, I would, you know, I definitely wanna do that. Definitely think it's a good idea.
To, to the inlet?
Yeah, to the inlet, yeah, I, I think so.
From looking at your plans, it looks like there's a.
I think, I think it'll help.
There is a low, so the lowest spot on the site, or along the rear, is that uh, southwest corner, or long lines where you're moving that tree.
Yes, down here?
Yeah, there's a hundred, and then there's this ninety-nine contour.
Yes.
Now, there's um, that seems to be like the lowest area where water would drain to, correct?
That's right.
If you put a lawn inlet at that corner, and connect it to the roof drain system, could that work?
We don't typically like to reduce sediment, soil, those grass clippings into the roof leaders system, yeah, not the roof system, whichever you want. So I don't typically like to do that. And again, to my mind, that could potentially cause more harm than good, in light of the fact that we're wholly knowledgeable here, we're reducing the drainage area that goes into the backyards dramatically. So, I'd be loving to do that.
And that would be, again, a piping issue where to go with that.
I mean, we are.
I'll go up the other side, because you're right on topic.
And you, since it's only a six inch pipe, it, he does have a point, it might. It might, there, there were, there might be some uh, some clogging issues.
Well, my, my, my concern is, right, is, is, I'm just saying, which way, when that house is done, when those two houses are done, which way is that backyard gonna slope, is it gonna slope to north and uh, west, or, or which way?
General drainage capacity out is to the west, as your engineer Christian pointed out. These contours of something goes to the west, a portion of it goes to the south, and where the garage is, apparently water sits on the east.
Right.
So, yeah, everything goes to the south.
Like, like before, because we just talked about that, yeah, that's what I was trying to fix, that was, that's the issue that, you know, a lot of people are gonna, you wouldn't want water in your, that coming on you either.
Camera in a minute, before the decision's made, hear from the neighbors.
Okay, we'll table that then, for a minute, we'll just, we're gonna move on, we're gonna table that for now.
Okay. Yeah, it is maybe more made develop than you.
Yeah, I just, yeah, absolutely.
You wouldn't happen to have any numbers on you on the amount of area right now, square footage that drains towards that versus proposed, right, so, okay.
I think.
Because that might, that might help.
Well, you, you, I, I think we can agree, especially those of us who used to look at these plans, that clearly the areas reduced, there really no dark issues.
No, I, I know, I think it would help.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grade somewhere better, but I'm down to number four now, where the request is dead, yeah, roof drains, just with all of that and connect them out front. We can do that. And the rest of the comments, I don't believe there's any testimony required, and we don't have any objections to anything else.
Okay.
Then we might have some more questions, we have four questions.
Okay, uh, any members of the board, any questions, any, draw, engineer, uh, planner, anything?
I think for the.
I have one question, sorry, I'm just reading, this is on the engineering report, they mentioned something about a, a fourth bedroom being listed, I. Four bedrooms, bedroom number four.
That's a very good question, I would not be able to respond.
Okay.
I think that's just a typo, I just wanted to.
You got me, okay, no problem, alright, um, so, you have any more witnesses or that to answer?
Well, if the board's done, there are the public questions, and then we'll, yeah. Just for this.
Just listen, oh, we can do that.
You question witness, or you can keep open, so nothing questions both.
Absolutely, okay, uh, my members of.
I would leave more insight to help these people.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Quinn.
Please, take your time, come on out.
Mr. Quinn, I have one question.
Okay.
Who is the uh, the sewer authority that, that services the?
Broadway Valley.
Broadway Valley.
Broadway Valley.
And in your professional experience, how, do you see sewer inlets being clogged around the surrounding area?
No, no, that's why I was surprised to see the Broadway Valley Sewer Authority requiring, because that's the treatment plan. This does not, when you have an application that generates a certain additional penalty, you're obligated to get treatment toward application. Part of which is to submit to the sewer authority to make sure they have capacity, this doesn't come anywhere near close to that, so I wasn't quite sure where that comment came. More pertinent would be the conveyance, and I'm assuming that not MUA or somebody that maintains this, there was a problem with conveyance here. You know, so it's at the max, and you had a sewer vacuum, then maybe that question would be a little more pertinent, but in my professional opinion, anyone lailing into existing Saturday sewer is not gonna be an issue that Broadway Valley doesn't care about, it's a local issue primarily.
Good. I, I, I don't really count what has their own MUA, so any connection to the Broadway Valley Sewer Authority would require an application, that, 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 that.
So, do they all need treatment, conveyance, Broadway Valley all opposed to conveyance?
I believe so, yes.
That would be very unusual, but obviously a connection to the requirement, Christian, so if it's Broadway Valley, then, which I'm surprised at, we'll go to Broadway Valley for the connection. Usually it's a local, either MUA or share service, but obviously we need a connection.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so how, how do we go through the process, you wanna have the, we ask questions?
Normally, the public would then ask questions, if there's been a suggestion made, that the remaining witness be sworn the case presented, and then when he's done, when the board's done, the public can ask both of them questions, that, either way.
Okay, that's, yes, sounds, okay, absolutely, uh, could you just call your next witness, witness then, please?
I'm Nidmczy.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spare your last name, please?
My name is John Nidmczy, it's N-I-E-M-C-Z-Y-K.
C-Z-Y.
Blame hold.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm here this evening to testify, because there's a, a point, uh.
Now, are you the owner of the property?
I am the owner, actually, I'm a managing member of the LLC that owns the property, just the technical.
Okay.
And so, uh, well, first I wanted to address one question regarding the um, uh, basically the houses, but I didn't say it correctly, that they're not gonna be identical cookie cutter facades, and so, the, the way we propose to achieve that is, you know, I would like to keep the layout, because um, it's, it's a bi-level, that I think everybody's familiar with the bi-level uh, layout, so I like that, it's a popular thing, you know, and works well. Um, and most importantly, I think people like it. Uh, but we, we intend to address the facade of the house, so they don't look like they're identical facades, by changing the, having two different roof lines in the front, by changing the finishes of the exterior, so using stone in different portions on the different houses, obviously we're using stone on the, the cultural stone, on the stairwells, and then changing the type of siding, whether it would be the uh, uh, we call them cedar shakes, but not wood, they're actually vinyl shakes now. Uh, vinyl shakes, on one facade, the other facade may be having a eight over eight or six over six siding on top of that. So we propose to address that, and when we, when we submit the plans, there'll be two different facades. Um, I guess that didn't happen in order to the planner, if you'd like to take a look at that prior to that, and if there are any issues. The second question that came up was uh, regarding switching me to, I mean, I don't know if that addresses the question. Is that?
Sure.
That addresses.
That's up to the board.
Oh, okay, alright, that's fine.
I just raised questions up to the board.
Yes, okay, so that's, that would be my, that would be my answer to that question. Um, the, the question was brought up, and I, I thought about it as I was sitting there, about flipping the driveways, and what I don't like about it is looking, you know. And what I don't like about it is you'd be, you know, four driveways across. And what I like about that neighborhood is it, it seems to follow a kind of a, a pattern. It feels like most of the driveways are kind of on the right inside of you. I mean, you know, a little varied depending on what house was done and what house, the next house was built, but I kind of wanted to keep that and, you know, this is, this is strange for me to say because usually trees are the enemy in my line of business because, you know, you're a lot longer. The tree at the end of this, this property is, I think it's really peeling it. And it kind of like defines, it kind of like ends that street. I don't know if, you know, like when you're pulling up there, it kind of like, that's, that's the end. And uh, we kind of went back and forth and it isn't, it isn't this shape. So, you know, I think from when we're done with it, I think it's a better thing to put the, the driveways away or keep them. The other thing is, I, I honestly, I haven't been on the property very much. We put in an application to demolish the, 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 uh, the home. There were some things that were missing, so we've recently demolished it currently, so hopefully we'll be, we'll be taking it down. And what I'd be interested in hearing, because I, I've been there a couple times during the day, never after a rainstorm. Um, you know, I was out there when there was snow on the ground and it did seem weird to me because the way, oh, the way the house is now, is here, it seemed to me almost like it's, it's all pitched in like this way, you know? That's what it seems like to me. And I think that's where the problem is. You know, what I would love to do, but I don't wanna make an easement, another easement along the backyard is to catch what I think would be engineers. But I don't wanna make another easement on people's property because I feel like this, this one's gonna be pretty restricted when we put another one in the third property. You know, pretty considerable back, you know, amount of space, I should say. So I feel a little more comfortable offering to somebody who's gonna be living there, not much, but at least, you know, the twenty-five by fifty or sixty feet that we have back there. So I, I, I would prefer not to, not to eat even more into that property. Because it's kind of weird when you, oh, right, it looks big, but then when we start chopping it with this easement and this and this, kind of the amount of space that we can actually use it against, gets kind of tight. Um, but what I noticed there and what I just looked at, as a matter of fact, is, is the, the elevation over here on the masonry garage is lower than where it is by the house. And that's where the gutters are coming down and they're not getting, they're not going out in the street right now as far as. They require when we took them down and anything that comes off that roof look like it made a V-line this way and a V-line that way. You know, just like, kind of just going straight down. And, and as far as, what the, she was, wait, wait up, is it?
Very good, thank you.
I think it's.
Like the baseball player.
It takes me a long time, but. But, uh, but this, this does fall down pretty, pretty quick here on the side. When I look at that side yard around that tree, and my concern, again, you know, it feels weird saying, but that, that tree has a pretty extensive root system that's built into that corner. I don't know if any of you guys out there have kind of been around it, but it's, it's not, it's not just, you know, the tree ends here and we can run it out there. I mean, I would be concerned if when we go to dig out of, of, a line, if that tree will break for the next three and a half or whatever until we're done and then, you know, dry out. So, you know, like I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna take that chance. So if you can guys can consider that, you know, I, I appreciate you keeping that in mind. But I'd also like to hear what the folks from the neighborhood have to say, because like I say, I haven't been out there when it, when it rained and I don't know, you know, I don't know if it's snow permitting or not, but I, I still like, you know, I'd like to hear what they're saying so that, you know, if we do wind up putting a drain in this corner, that it's actually addressing some of the questions or, well, some of the same problems that you're experiencing now, as opposed to, you know, because maybe, maybe we put the drain in here, but it's really affecting the guy who lives over here. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think that you're from that, is that okay to say?
Well, but then we're gonna get to that.
Yeah, okay, so that was, that was what I wanted to say.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Just, okay, I think, good, okay, good. Thank you very much.
Questions for the public?
All right, um, it opens up to the public now. Uh, can we make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, hold favor? Okay, this is now open to the public for questions regarding this application. Yeah, please, please do.
Uh, Dr. Herter, thirteen North twelve Street, I have a few questions. The driveway closer to, uh, Cranford Line, is that gonna interfere or even be expanding the roadway along there? Or is that before the cul-de-sac?
That's actually before the cul-de-sac.
So it's not gonna affect that?
That's correct. Right, can't be problematic that you really want to say it.
And I know your trees were, I'm saying, there's this tree.
But, but are you eventually gonna, gonna see the final plans, correct? I mean, after, if you vet the board approves this, you can be, you'll be reviewing it anyway, right?
I, I hope so, but I do have a couple of points that, that I think.
Okay, it's, it's usually, it's kind of unusual for the zoning officer to, to jump into a hearing and ask questions like, I don't know.
Well, because, because they're submitting your plan.
Yeah.
Right? And I'm not looking at the plan and I'm looking at the numbers. If, if this is where the foundation is going to be.
Yeah.
They're not gonna have a twenty-five foot zere yard. They're only gonna have a twenty-one. Even if you do the numbers, twenty-five foot, like you said, back, if you set on ten, and twenty-five feet in the back, it's fit. The foundation proposing a fifty-four.
That's two and over eight.
It's the second floor.
That's the second floor, I believe. I mean, that's twenty-foot step back is okay. But twenty-five is forty. I believe, actually, that's what I thought.
I didn't.
No, you're right. So I believe the second floor can't even go over the first. So the building penetrates the ground, it'll be twenty-five feet from the foundation.
Okay.
The way I look at it, it look like it was shaking.
So that clarifies that.
Back and driveway. And just real quick, you know, I'll be my best one with the trees. The darker tree, is that being removed or proposed?
No, that's both. Those two trees, this is a normally enabled.
Right, I saw it.
Yeah, right, they're both able.
Why can't we, uh, just take this tree, put it on this end, so that stays away from?
Because there is a very large, we're a tree we're trying to maintain. This is a very violent.
Okay.
As you have him said, kind of marquee the end of the street. I understood we didn't want to take that down in favor of.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, thanks. Okay, three answers from the public who'd like to come speak, but that's, that's some questions, thank you. Hello?
David, my name is Joseph Dova, sixty-five South Twenty First Street.
Great.
I am the neighbor to this Jason Bob.
Okay.
And, um, I do have some pictures.
Are you, um, Nineteenth Street or you, um?
South Twenty Street, sixty-five, the, uh.
Yeah.
So it's sixty-seven.
Yeah, so as you face the existing pasture to the right of me, correct? Okay.
Where the easements, um, you're looking at my house.
Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wanna swear you in. I have a feeling this is gonna drift from questions to statements pretty quick. Uh, because Rachel, I think with regard to this application, can you swear your comments shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and again, we have your names, your, your last name again, sir?
Dova, D A U L I.
Thank you.
Sixty-five South Twenty.
Thank you.
Um, I am adjacent to this sixty-seven, it is to the left of me. The easement is to the left of my home. I have pictures here showing the flooding. Uh, most of the flooding is right now in the streets. Uh, concerning the three properties, my property across the street, which is.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four and sixty-eight South Twenty First Street. Now, I just found out that the easement runs east to west. So when the water flows.
Did you show us on the map?
Oh, God.
Yeah, for, for the laptop.
Okay.
Yeah, go for the cover sheet.
Or the block.
Well, please just point out where it's now.
This is South Twenty, this is our property and I think this is.
Yeah, I think this is. Okay, so the water runs east to west through the easements. And the easement is right here. Um, can I show?
You're gonna have to indicate, okay, what are you gonna show us? Who, who took the pictures and where?
I took the pictures, uh, when? Uh, approximately, actually.
Proximately.
Approximately seven oh one A P M.
P M, okay.
Look, it was a little.
The board can certainly see that, but I would have to mark it into evidence and you'd have to circulate the whole thing so the board could see it. I mean, if you wanna.
Key in evidence is it's an eye picture.
It's an eye.
Yeah. Well. I have to print it out in an actual picture that we can use for purposes of the record.
I didn't know that.
Could you just summarize and explain this a little bit?
Yeah, we. What happened is this was a fifteen-minute rainstorm.
Yeah.
Within that fifteen minutes, I get a foot and a half to two feet of water at the storm store. Which across the street also gets it. The water comes up through storm store. Which the water runs down South Twenty First Street to the one and only storm store.
Yeah.
So our concern at the end of the block, the three people that are here.
Just talk for yourself.
Right, I, I was there today. I saw exactly, I saw.
My concern is where if, I understand that there is a one, there is one existing building there now.
Yes.
That they add another, uh.
Right, right, yeah.
It's going to absorb and put more water into this overloaded storm store.
Guys, your point is that the storm sewer itself is overloaded?
Correct.
That's, that's, that's why you have.
To where they're saying that they're gonna put, someone was saying they're gonna put a section pipe into that.
Right.
Storm store, that is not gonna help. That is just gonna, again, that would actually hurt the existing new home. Because this, that, the system cannot handle the water.
Okay, please. Okay, no, that's, any questions? Any questions for us?
We are, um, yeah, I know this is a little bit different, but, um, we are planning to do some storm, storm sewer inspection along that pipe soon. Um, and we're hoping that we can at least try to find a solution to, uh, what's, what's been going on there. Other than just, um, cheap volume.
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally know it comes from the very top of the road all the way down. And I saw today, I said, I can't believe that it goes to this little thing at the end. There, there's, there's, there's just too much going in one little slot.
So where, you know, my neighbors, which I, I still, so there is actually water that'll come up.
Yeah.
Before it goes down.
Oh, I know, I understand. I can understand.
Come in, let's say myself, I've seen the water go from halfway up my driveway to when I moved in, uh, twenty years ago.
But.
It's three quarters of the way up my driveway now.
Right, but, but my point is, I understand what you're saying, but it's happening now already and nothing's, nothing's been changed, right? So I think there's a problem with the, what we do in the system, that's what Chris was trying to explain.
The borough engineer is gonna.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, but like I say, I heard you talking, like you're gonna put a section pipe into the.
Well, yeah, I mean, just get it, make sure it gets in the street, it gets it off the street and, you know, out.
But if it goes into that same pipe, it's just going to add to that problem of the water not being able to go in.
Okay, that's, that's, we'll take that definitely.
I have another question.
Sure, I'm sorry, no, I keep.
Is that a fifteen-minute rain? That's a fifteen-inch pipe, not even itself, not even area.
For what?
It's gonna. A fifteen-inch pipe, not necessarily small. Because of fifteen minutes, that indicates to me there's a block or some sort of crack or something. Tell me this, but tell me this, in your experience, if you have a slow, long-lasting rain event that doesn't pipe and that is intense, but easily puts that as much water, does that same thing happen here? So it's mostly thunderstorm events or, I'm trying to get an understanding.
I, I, not thunderstorm, but heavy rains, heavy, heavy rains. Like if it, if half hour, forty-five minute rain, it all.
If you have an all-day rain that's not overly heavy.
No.
It doesn't, see, that's, that's why it indicates to me that there's an obstruction or a crack or something in the pipe. Because it shouldn't clog that fast after a short duration rain. And if you.
But hopefully the borough engineer would, would, would resolve.
I mean, I'll say, the hard question I'll let her be is cover on the overload site, so.
Yeah.
I understand you can turn it out directly into the pipe, but eventually whatever water that flowed this whole along here, the water from this property is making into this pipe in one way or another. If not here or here, certainly by the time it gets down to these inlets here. So all of this water is eventually gonna get there, so.
Even in the existing condition?
Yeah, we're.
But that's, that's what's happening now, or what they're trying to do is make it a little bit better.
I understand that. That is one dwell, that's one dwelling that they are now on that existing block.
In terms of impervious coverage, they're putting less, so.
Less what?
Less impervious area means less, uh, less runoff going.
Drive way, home, rest.
Less, more grass, less, fruit, less.
Better for your building.
Yeah.
It's smaller buildings, not as.
I, I, mostly smaller drive.
And, but you say, like you're putting up another home and you're putting up, I believe you said two, uh, paddies.
Yes.
Correct.
And still less.
It's still less.
Because it's taller.
If you look at the, I mean.
See, they have a, they have a, they have a larger, they have a larger driveway.
Show them the last page.
But the patio, but right there on back though.
Just so you're, the area of the property that's covered by hard skin, which means the surface that's not able to let the water penetrate.
Right.
That, it's going to be equal to or less.
Than what's there now.
Than what's there now. So it won't be exacerbating the flow that that pipe is taking. That's why what you're describing to me, it seems to me like it's an obstruction of the pipe. So we've got this dwelling, large patio in the back, and these two garages, this is all hard skin, driveway around the driveway. That area of we call hard skin is more than these two dwellings and these short driveways are limited in a lot of impervious, and this garage is also. Even with the patio that's out back, we won't be increasing purchase because of the relative to what's there now. So that will not impair the pipe, which may already be impaired, but it's not gonna further impair that pipe. But it's exacerbating.
Like gentlemen, I don't think we solved this tonight, but I think we should move on, you know, just, your point was, points are well taken. I think the borough, or borough engineer is gonna have to look at that and hopefully, if there's a crack or a blockage, they'll take care of it.
We, um, and again, this is outside of scope, but I know that the council set aside some money for, to video the pipes and to fix them if need be. And that's gonna happen within the next ten days, at least the video of it, to figure out what's going on down there.
And if I could just say one thing, that, what we spoke to them about was controlling the rest of the water so that we know where it's going. Obviously, there's a, something wrong with the, with the storm piping right now. And hopefully, as everybody said, that'll get repaired, but right now, let them control it so that when it gets fixed, you're not, we're asking them to do that, so you're not worrying about, um, is it washing off the right way and going in? They're gonna hard pipe it and connect it there, so hopefully when the.
To the?
To the pipe that's backing up right now.
Okay.
But once that's fixed, it won't be running across their prop, these new houses' property and making its way through the street. It'll be going underground in a pipe directly in it.
Right.
Again, it's better to be controlled rather than it just sheeting off and going, you know. The drains are, are good right now. When the homeowners get into this, who knows what they're gonna be doing, digging English gardens in the front yard, but there'll be controlled piping right now, so you want it that way so that it is controlled irregardless of what the new homeowner may do to the property. And that's why we're asking for it and that's why we're looking to do that, so that it is controlled. Hopefully, once whatever faulty thing is going on with the system gets repaired, it's beneficial to everybody.
What, what happens, what happens if it's just being overloaded?
The, then we have to look into that, but we, we have, we have to know what's happening.
Right.
First.
I think what.
We can't do, we can't do every what-if scenario, you know, we have to, we have to find out what the problem is first.
Believe me, your new neighbor, though, is not gonna want his new property that he's sinking new money into to be flooded because he's gonna have hard times.
Well, that's, that's, I'm hoping that when they know the house is, that they don't bring them up, that they don't get flooded and I, the people around us and the people in back of us, to get more water.
Well, no, that's what we are.
The plan is also.
What's the, is that stuff? That's.
Was there a list they want to finish for us?
That's what, again.
Cause he does have indicated on here the existing. A lot, well, existing finished floor is one oh two eight eight. Uh, and you're just one oh one eight, so they're, they're coming down, they're not going up, so.
Okay.
I'm, 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 yeah, that's fine, it just.
Okay.
I think they were gonna fix it, it's not necessarily his responsibility, the line is, you know, it's, it has a problem, so I didn't think of it like.
I'm not sure, like I say again, whether it's the line, I just don't want, like I say, and our, our concern is more water coming into that.
Absolutely.
So, that's what the neighbors been telling us.
I, I think, I mean, I think the, the law is cruel, these, I was thinking, an expert in this. Maybe the worst case scenario, I think maybe if they ran it out to the street and then if it did back up, it would back up on that. And then it wouldn't back up on you, I don't know. I mean, that's just lame, that is definitely in its terms, uh, but they'll, they'll figure it out across that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Castle?
No.
Okay.
Make the motion to close the public meeting.
Okay, I'm, like, someone make a motion to close the public session. Do you have a summation?
Today.
I'll make it. So, okay, all right.
I, I.
Okay, um, I guess we're time for discussion. Counselor, do you have anything to say, or, or you?
No, I actually, uh, just, I just read it right now, of course. That we are not adding to a problem we're trying to resolve and a problem and addressing it in an approach to action. Although there's some confusion in the public's eye as to what is actually going on, uh, the, the intent here is to reduce the flooding, to reduce the problem and cooperate with the town in the necessary, in all necessary means that are appropriate, so that we can work with them and reduce the problem as it exists, preventing problems from developing. Uh, I think we've answered all your questions, but if there are any additional questions, we would, of course, uh, address.
Okay, yeah, I know this has been, been a long, uh, meeting before we get there. Okay, um, so, uh, with this discussion on the board members, I guess.
Well, you know, the one thing I really got a good testimony here is that even though there's gonna be two houses, the impervious, cause the grass area, let's say, is actually gonna be more than there is now. So, by demolishing and ripping out the concrete and the driveway and all that stuff that's existing now, it's gonna have more grass when it's done than it does now. Is that's correct? Both, Mr. Martin, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Less impervious.
Definitely less impervious, they're well under it.
And I, I, I guess, yes, right, you have to be an expert to realize that if the, the roof leaders are not, you know, if they're in place and they're running out to, uh, the street or to the, to the storm sewer, they're not going to be in that backyard and going to someone else's backyard, so. But, so.
As far as that, uh, that, um, curb waiver, um, I, I tend to agree, I don't see, I don't see any reason why there's a, that waiver on with anyone else that would vote on that. As long as it's in our power to say that it makes sense based on, based on what's there now.
Yeah, I think a curb would look different.
Out of place.
Yeah.
If the, if the road ever gets improved, it's gonna be taken care of by an assessment.
I, actually, if it wasn't for how the end of the street is ill-defined, I would say put it in.
Right.
But it, the street not being defined, and then if you mess around and do that, do we destroy that tree? They're rooted it all on the tree, so yes, we would.
As far as the tree waiver, and, I'm sorry. Why, why can't, why can't we have a tree planted in the, in the easement? Can we not have a tree planted in the easement?
I mean, you can, but if there's ever any issues, then the tree's gonna have to come out anyways.
And the tree roots may go down into those pires.
Oh.
I'm okay with minus one tree.
Well, the donation. They're not taking the, you know, proposing to run, um, uh, six, you know, a decent run of six inch pipe. And, um, so, I, you know, if we had something in place in the township where, you know, we could easily flip that tree somewhere else, we'd break it, because this would be a perfect situation.
I think it's something we have, does have an opportunity to donate one to the borough.
He does have an opportunity to.
One. Do you have any trouble?
Two, two of course.
Yeah.
We get a summary from.
The condition, well, you're voting on a minor subdivision, the conditions I have are, we have, uh, recommendations in our consultant's reports, I believe they were addressed, and with maybe a couple of exceptions, their, their applicants, uh, will, will comply. What I have is the H V, uh, H C systems in the rear yard will be buffered, and I believe they're gonna submit revised plans showing, showing that, that buffering, that's what I heard. Uh, two eight by eight patios will be added to the rear, um, uh, curbing no problem with the waiver, uh, subdivision by D, not, not a plat, the roof leaders for both of the houses will be redirected, um, for the front of the house, I believe, and leaders will go directly into the storm sewer inlets in the streets.
Well, that's for the one on my right, the one on my left is going toward the east, right?
Okay.
Well, they're all.
I thought, I thought they were all.
I thought, I thought the one.
Yeah, they're gonna go both in the.
I thought the one, that one is gonna go toward the easement, but the other one is gonna go toward the front and then down right away.
It's still connected to.
They're still connected.
Yeah, right, 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 I'm sorry.
Uh, the northwest corner of the site within the easement, an inlet will be installed, may not help, but can't hurt.
There will be testimony presented by this gentleman, suggested there's no need for that.
Not only that, but we, it's claiming that the pipe is surcharged and water's coming out of the street. We add another inlet back in here, I thought the purpose of that inlet is going to be to evacuate surface water. We're not talking about surface, we're talking about, based on what I'm hearing, water pumping up at an inlet because there's some blockage in the pipe. Adding an inlet there, it's not going to help anything under that circumstance. I would not recommend that, based on what I'm hearing.
Okay, what's, what's important, we're with professional, okay, so we'll.
But wait a minute, so.
So, there will not be a.
So, let's just, just, let's talk about what, um, what's your name again?
Tom Quinn.
Tom Quinn.
Just talk about what you just said, so, all right, we have a bubbler, so we have an existing problem on the existing street, which the town is gonna look at and try to resolve. So, we really don't know what the issue is, but it could be a crack in the pipe, it could be whatever, it could be anything. Once that's resolved, like everything else we're talking about, once that's resolved, we won't have any more headaches because the proposed dwellings will be controlled in some way or form. So, putting the inlet in the back, which is running from the street west, right? Putting the inlet in the back, what you just said isn't gonna help it, it's not gonna hurt it either. So, maybe when the bubbler is fixed, or when the street is fixed, where they scope it, they increase the pipe, they put another inlet in, they do whatever they gotta do. In the future, when that gets resolved, that extra inlet in the back isn't gonna hurt either.
I would agree with you, it's not gonna hurt, but the intent of proposing in the first place was because we thought there was surface water that, we, we all acknowledge, there's not gonna be a lot of surface water apparent from the total, that's gonna go with it anyway. So, it was of, of limited value to my.
I thought, I thought the original conversation was, I know that Mr. Padilla, is it, he, what, what? Padilla, I'm sorry, I got a clip. So, I, I, I know you said there was flooding on the street, but I thought we also assumed, and I, I wasn't actually gonna flood either, that there was water in the back.
No, I, 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 I've seen it, I thought, they never said there was water, I assumed since they were behind, I didn't realize.
This is.
Did we hear from you?
Here, I know what we're talking about.
No, none of them, because. That, so again, I think you're right, if they fix the pipe, then it's not gonna hurt, it's not gonna help a lot. But what if they don't fix that pipe for two or three years? Now we introduced another bubbler area, so we've got water popping out here, we've got water popping out here. I, I, to my mind, it's not, if this had a lot of utility, there was a low area here that had drained, we were definitely taking surface water off. I would say do it in the.
On that.
Now, but since it's a limited utility, making surface water will often be fun. And since our, not a surcharged pipe where water can easily back up, so who knows how it'll, it's gonna be resolved.
Okay.
Just saying, I would be reluctant to clear.
All right, let me, let me, let me pose one more question and then, uh, the board can react.
I'm gonna have your question.
No, 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 just, so, so. The inlet in the back, can hurt, can't hurt, not gonna hurt. Whether it's gonna do any benefit right now, because we don't know why the inlet on the street is backing up. Could be backing up because there's a crack in the line somewhere down easement, could be backing up because of somewhere else. But Councilman Shuck, he's saying that they're gonna scope the pipe within the next two weeks?
Good, no, fixing you.
No, 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 I'm just saying, they're gonna, you're gonna scope the pipe, right?
Yes.
On the street down easement? So, you'll be able to fi- figure out whether there is in fact a crack or something like that, or a fault in the easement pipe. It's now, that, that inlet in the back, we're only talking about the, the easement pipe, right?
Yes, well, it's like that whole line that goes from, um, between nineteen.
I know that, but what I'm saying, like, is there, I, I mean, I wanna put this in bed too, I'm just saying, is that, is there a condition that, um, we wanna put, we wanna see this inlet in the back because we feel that it might, uh, help? Now or along the line, but we don't know whether that's cracked or not, not that we're asking you to fix the crack. But if you're gonna find out within the next couple of weeks, if the thing is cracked, um, I don't know, I guess what I'm saying is that depending on what you find out, can we have that hinged on putting the inlet in? If we, if we put the inlet in and, and the pipe is cracked, yeah, it's not gonna do anything, this could, it could just, yeah, it could back up. I mean, what if the pipe's cracked down here, who knows?
Christian, do, do you think like next board meeting, we would have a better handle on that issue?
I'm hoping, but we, we already got pushed back once for this, and so, I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to, to kinda, kinda do that. I mean, we, we were supposed to actually TV that, uh, maybe ten, a couple of weeks ago already.
From an engineering standpoint, I can't agree with us, I don't, I don't see, I follow, follow Mr. Quinn's, that it's not gonna help, it's just, it's there. You're doing it because you feel like you need to do it, but I don't know if it'll serve an engineering purpose, from everything that I've seen. The, the problem is what's happening, uh, on the street and the drainage and the backup there. Uh, unless there's additional testimony as far as, uh, these backyards backing up and, and, and palming, which we, we haven't heard anything like that. So, that's why, um, my thing, I don't think we should complicate it anymore, especially not knowing when, when this is, the pipe issue will be addressed.
All right, so. Yes or no on the northwest corner inlet? Sorry, no.
No.
That's gonna say no. And then the other, uh, condition was the one tree donation for house.
Christmas trees to. Christmas cheese to our engineering plant. It's just a tree. And then I'm, I'm normal, and then the normal conditions and that's it.
I don't need anymore trees.
Yes.
Um, do our architectural plan is to show the distinctiveness between the, uh, two, uh, redesigned townhomes and the condition that the subdivision be by D?
Yes, that's, I have that.
Okay.
You're gonna give me your quickie memo on that between now and the next meeting, it firms the conditions. I think I have them all, but just in case.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And you had the roof leaders too, correct?
Very good.
What was that last name?
The roof leaders.
Uh.
All some leaders connected directly.
Yes.
So, I have that.
As long as all the engineer, uh, that has agreed that all the engineer, engineering requirements are met, I would make a motion to approve.
Thanks. Okay, both of us?
I don't know. Everyone votes, it's all. Before I vote, I, I just wanna let people know that, uh, I looked really hard at this project and that the fact that it is giving us more grassy area, for lack of a better term, after the project's done than before the project's done, I, I don't see a touch from it, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Carrick.
Uh, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Malley.
Vote yes.
Mr. Pantina.
Yes.
Mr. Lada.
Yes.
Taquela.
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Kenny.
Vote yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. Five and break, yeah, five and break, motion?
Second. All.
With the reopen. So, our back, okay.
Um, I have a motion to reopen.
Okay, can someone, they can motion reopen, please?
I have a motion to reopen.
Second. Second voice vote.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, voice vote, yeah, okay.
Oh, I forgot.
That's the next application.
Okay, um, next application, follow, two is the, uh, application three seven two, minor site plan, Ark of Union County, Lexington Avenue. Okay, uh, who's here? Sure. Absolutely. Why don't we? No, we got more, yeah, we're gonna start. Christian and, and Kevin, with regard to this application, do you swear any testimony or comments you may show me the truth?
I do.
It's our board planner and board engineer, thank you. Kevin, what do you have for us?
Well, yeah, counselor, why don't you introduce yourself and who you plan to call?
Uh, John Friere, Friere Law Group, on behalf of the Ark of Union County. We're here for a, uh, minor site plan approval of a adult vocational education center. I'll be calling one witness tonight.
Okay, that will be what?
Frank Carragher, Executive Director.
Thank you. Okay.
Chairman, does the board wish for me to lay out of the, uh, applications before you?
Yes, yes, please.
Chairman, recently we have been, uh, reviewing more and more of these minor site plans, which means that they fall into a category that is carved out of the ordinance to have, um, applications with less than say five hundred additional square feet or more parking area, um, or significant changes to a lot. Um, don't have to go for full site plan hearing, don't have to notice, and it's, and there is a relaxed, uh, standard proof um, that is, um, looked upon by the board. This particular case, uh, the Ark has a fully conforming site plan in preview, uh, it's been D minor because it has, it's not making any significant physical changes to the lot. The use itself is, um, an adult's training center for, uh, people with mental disabilities. The Ark itself on Lexington Avenue, um, is going to be changed in a few ways that we discussed during our technical review process with the applicant. Um, all of my comments have been satisfied over the last few months with them, and the only thing I have left is, uh, just to hear from them about what they wish to do about the sign, and they're allowed a conforming sign here, they could certainly even come back later and ask for a sign. This sort of might be easier to throw it all into one application to consider it all. My understanding from Mr. Friere is that the Executive Director is gonna tell you of what goes on in this building, and, uh, because it's fully conforming, uh, it's up to the board to make sure that there's no threat to the public health, morals, or public safety. Uh, because if there is, you can turn it down with, under any other circumstances. It's something that is typically approved. Board, have any questions?
No, sir. Counselor, why don't you pick up?
Where, Mr. Brian?
I'm the all, Frank Carragher, Executive Director, Ark of Union County.
Thank you. Would you raise your right hand, please, sir, and, uh, do you swear that the testimony and comment you're about to give show me the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Frank X Carragher, C A R A G H E R.
C A R A.
G H.
G H E R, thank you.
All right. Didn't break.
And you're the Executive Director of the.
I am the Executive Director, I have been for twenty eight years.
Of the, uh, Ark?
Of the Ark of Union County. It is a five oh one C three, not a profit, that is organized to provide services to people with developmental disabilities and other challenges, uh, inside the, the county of Union. Uh, our main offices are seventy Diamond Road in Springfield, uh, we've been in the county for, uh, we are celebrating our seventieth anniversary next year. Uh, in fact, our first offices were on a, on the boulevard, on the, on the second floor of a, uh, leap up a lawyer's office. I'm not sure if the office is still there. Last time I drove by. Last time I drove by it was on Greg, but that was their first offices of my coming home. I just can't remember ever staying as asleep in Kettleworth. The program itself, the layout that you have on the drawings is, is something that I put together, the architect followed through my plan. The long to back wall, there are instructional sections, there'll be media and classrooms set up along the way. There will be a small workshop that is in the far right corner, as we had planned. That's where the warehouse is, with the delivery bays, and also where the, they'll be getting in, at classroom, but it's more piecework, where they bring in things, where they assemble and assemble or disassemble it sometimes. We get local businesses to give us jobs along the way. We have somebody on staff who procures that kind of work. That, there are four different kinds of groups in this. One is the developmental disabled funded by the Department of Labor. That is more to this, this piecework than we have. There are, there is supported employment, they're gonna be getting more social skills and communication skills and how to get a job and hold it in the community. There'll be job placement, there'll be job training and coaching along the way. You know, you think about people who don't have those types of skills in the community, learning how to remain in the community. A lot of their benefits, especially the higher functioning guys that we're dealing with, with the changes that are happening and in the federal government budget, they're gonna have to have employment to maintain those benefits. So that's why we're doing this. The other thing the state has, I apologize if I talk too fast.
No, just trying to...
The, the other thing that's happening in, in the, in this state is that the state of New Jersey does not want these, these programs being segregated stuck in the, in the back of a old manufacturing collection of buildings. This building is on a bus line. It allows us, being on a cusp of residential, and we think that that is a big improvement over what we've seen opportunities. Building's about 13,400. Normally, I try to get about 15,000 when I do a project like this. It's sprinkled, which is something that the, the state require. It allows me adequate spacing to do the second needs of regress on a ramp. The inside's gonna be very professional, because we can be bringing people in to show them that we can do work, convince them that we have employment, the people who can be employed in their companies. And the training is going to be governed by, licensed by the Department of Labor for the, and nationally certified, by the way, for the, for the workshop.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, I get paid to talk fast sometimes, and maybe at night I just go...
Let's wait, yeah, we're gonna...
How many employees is that? At this point, the budget has called half sixteen, but I don't think that'll be the start. I think that we'll build to that. We have hoped that we could be in sometime at this point, but the process is changing the process. And so we're looking now for something, maybe February or March. So those positions may evolve into something else at this point, but it's not gonna be a heavy employee place.
Is that at any one, at any one time, what's the max number?
Literally fourteen.
Okay, and then how about, how about...
No, I'm sorry, I said sixteen.
Sixteen, all right. How about people, uh...
Of the sixteen, there'll be people who are job coaches, they'll be out.
Got it.
There'll be job developers who will be out. So I would think that the max that will be serving there is probably about 50 people, and half of them will be in, in the building for training and the workshop, and the other half will be out in employment at various levels of the staff. We'll pick the people up and take them to the jobs. There, there's not gonna be transportation, there won't be private vehicles from, from our guys, because none of them can drive. And we have a history of running programs of this nature for the last 45 years.
So out of...
This is our first effort in Kettleworth.
So out of the 50 people, you just said, you said two things, you said 50, and then you all said 14.
No, 14 employees.
14 employees.
People who are serving.
Right, okay. So the parking's gonna go on, on the 14, right?
Yeah.
That's odd.
Yes, really.
I was at your location, Diamond, Diamond Road. There was those little mini busts, you know, those buses, you know, transportation.
We have six programs there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Much lower.
No, I'm just trying to get a feel for what we would expect.
There's 150 people in that, in that side.
Oh, yeah, of course.
The building, as you come out of that building across the street?
Yes.
Is the one we're replacing.
Wow, okay.
And, and that's the one that's moving here. You don't see that much. You may see paratransit, or you may see, there's another one that, so somebody will get picked up?
Yeah.
And dropped off at the door. But they, they won't be bringing their own vehicles, and the employees will be bringing their car and using, using our vehicles to do the, if they're not picking the people up at their house.
Yeah, I just, I just, no, I read, I read what you had written on your application about it.
Did I see you when you came to the program?
What?
Did I see you when you came to the program?
No, I just went by.
You just snuck in?
No, but I went, took a look at it, I was just, I don't know. You wouldn't take me.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask about our security.
No. Not security, yeah.
Because I asked...
That has 95 spot parking lots, by the way.
No, I, yeah, that's not an issue, I just, I just was thinking, that's better if there was, right, if people were coming together.
It's congested.
Just to wrap up the improvements, I understand there's gonna be interior improvements to the building, which you were touching on, and something about the parking lot, what are you gonna be doing to the parking lot?
Lighting it up, there are twenty spaces, there's also handicapping spots that's gonna be put in. And I know you've talked a lot about greenery. 70 doesn't have a lot of greenery, but, but this is not, this building is not maintained well outside, and we will be taking care of that.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's part of the organization, it's part of the entity, so we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I have the logo, the logo will be, whatever sign that we put on.
And that'll be on the building, right?
Yeah, of course.
That'll apply with any broadness.
Yeah, right now you have, I think, six letters or partial letters on the wall of the previous.
Food, food and shoes.
And we'll make it improved.
And the weeds are growing over the, the number. I joked, I asked it once, and then I had to turn around and come back.
No, I don't have any problem at all, just...
No, I'm not, I'm sorry, I have my allergy, I'm, I'm punctuated.
I didn't want to be the one who said that, I just, thank you for being this side of the days.
Chairman, the improvements that the investigators showed on the current plans.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw, there's a lot, it's fantastic, really is. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
Does the loading zone affect the striped walkway at all? I mean, will that, if that...
No, no. We're giving way one of the delivery bays to the accessible, leaving the ramp going down.
Right, I got that.
And loading it. The, the other, the other one, it comes out to the sidewalk. That, that line that you see here, this is not the ramp, the ramp is up against the building, the, the...
No, I got that, but where the, where the existing one's gonna stay, is that gonna affect the striped walkway at all? I mean, like, so when a, when a...
Maybe if there's deliveries or if there's trucks or whatever. Now, this is a pretty deep bag. Yeah, our truck is, I, I think it's 16 feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not, we, we, we don't do that much business.
Okay, well, you had 14 by 40, that's why I asked.
Yeah, we're, we're not doing much to the outside, mostly inside, that we wanna have a professional department.
Do you have two facilities in Cranford?
I do not, I sold both buildings.
You used to have two facilities.
Okay, yes, I did. We are, we, we consolidated, the, there was times during the, the last administration that there was money not necessarily flowing to the programs, and, and as such, we had to cut back in certain places. We sold those two buildings because they were not gonna conform with the new standards that we're facing. And we consolidated all of those programs into Springfield, which has been a real boom, we got a great deal on it, and, uh, next time you buy it.
Yeah, we're buying, it was obviously...
And when we finish this one, come back.
Yeah, no, of course, of course.
What I was gonna say was, when I was growing up, there was a, a neighbor down the street that went to the last sort.
Oh, really?
And it was, it was his inspiration, it's what made his life at that point something.
People with only mental disabilities have it ever, right? And so if he was with us then, he would be with us now.
He's not with, he's not with us. It's not with us at all. But, yeah.
Did you happen to, you, my letter dated October 4th?
Yes, all of, I'm sure it's a condition of the approval. We're going to agree to make the changes to the final site plan that you suggested in your letter.
Okay.
I love, that's all right.
Chris, are you okay with the sanitary sewer flow? I see that in your...
Just to, just to provide, just to say yes or no.
Yeah, we will, we will, of course, comply with the Rowley Valley Sewer Authority Terminals, whatever that is, that was required of us under Rowley Valley Sewer.
Yeah, I mean, if you're less flow than, you're less flow, but there, obviously there's something on the, on the front that would say that. And just one comment, the post shrubs that are in the, are those gonna be, like, potted? Because that's just all asphalt right now.
Yeah, I had to say, that is, it, it, it will be, it will be similar to whatever we do with the front of the building along the way. It will not block vision, and, and if, in fact, we, we comply with, I would prefer that, keep like a hedge.
Okay. And refuse and recycling will be kept indoors?
Yes. The, on, on, here's where the moving outdoors are, the way the warehouse is carved out is a, like, a little foyer here. We're going to have the, the garbage and the recyclables kept inside, and we're working with the company that does our rubbish removal to, to be able to pick it up in that way off the dock.
Okay. All right.
Great.
Any other questions?
Okay, motion open up to the public?
So...
Second. Okay, all favor?
Aye. Motion close?
Good, I see.
Make a motion be close.
Second.
Yep. Yeah, of course. Comments from the forum?
Any questions?
So I'd like to make a move to approve the application.
Okay.
Based on, I don't think of any additional...
Just meaning the engineers. Right, the letter of reports and the signs that comply with the ordinances. I'll second. Great, okay. First by Mr. Mazzio, second by Mr. Malde. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Carrick?
Yes.
Mr. Malde?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Laddaby?
Yes.
To Coella?
Yes.
To Mazzio?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Really good, those are really good ones. See no fusty trees, no fusty water. I, I, I had the option of moving first, I didn't know whether I could do that. I deserved it. All right, okay, so we're gonna, yeah, of course, well, comments for the good of the board?
Nobody's here, nobody's here. Thank you for welcoming to the...
Well, absolutely welcome, that's a good call.
Thank you very much.
Two votes.